Thank you, and good morning, everyone. I'm gonna get started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and in Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting, and can be also found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present. When your name is called, we would like for your image to be displayed on the screen, so you may say a couple of additional words. Mr. McDermott, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Mr. Decker, please call a roll. I'm sorry, sir.
It's okay, Mr. President. Councilwoman Brooks.
Present.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the city folks.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
President, good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Morning, colleagues. Present.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, colleagues. Mr. President, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, and colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes the Reverend Robert Tyler, Baptist Church. He is here today to address Councilwoman Kim. I would ask all members of the guests, please bow your head.
Good morning, Council President Clark. Thank you for the introduction. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to offer our prayer this morning. We begin by thanking you for keeping us safe over the night and waking us up this morning in our right minds with a good portion of health and strength. Not only that, Lord, but we thank you for providing us daily bread, a roof over our heads, and clothing on our backs. We thank you for these elected officials who serve so diligently on City Council. Keep every council member healthy and safe. Give them individually and collectively the wisdom that they need to make decisions that are best for the citizens of Philadelphia, regardless of zip code in which the residents reside, whether they live in northeast or north Philadelphia, in Kensington or Chestnut Hill. May all Philadelphians have visible evidence that every council member is equally concerned about them. Let no member of this esteemed body ever make a decision that robs the poor and needy and give to the rich and prosperous. May every bill that is passed be based on what is right, just, and fair. Your word says that we have not because we ask not. So during these times when the budget is being considered, we do have a few things to ask of you, God. First, we ask that the $100 million for violence prevention that black clergies advocating for to be used to fund successful violence prevention initiatives become a part of the budget. Also, we ask that the $50 million for a youth-powered anti-violence agenda being requested by council member Helen Ginn and several of other council members also be a part of the budget. A minimum of $150 million to fund community groups, job programs for youth, recreation center staffing and repairs. Mental health programs is just the beginning of what is needed to stem the spread of violence, especially gun violence. Let no member of City Council rest until he or she does his or her part to vote for a budget that helps curb the rising tide of violence. Gun violence is the second pandemic that we face. Lord, we know that it's not going to vanish on its own. God, it took you directing the hands and minds of scientists for effective vaccines for COVID-19 to be found. Now, because of that, we have seen a monumental reduction in the number of people dying from COVID-19 pandemic. We know, God, that it will take that same kind of monetary investment to get rid of the gun violence. Lord, it was not your way or your will that 499 people died of gun violence last year. We did not do our part. Heavenly Father, touch the hearts of council members and let the budget reflect a minimum of $150 million targeted for violence prevention, especially the gun violence pandemic. Touch hearts and let no tax breaks and tax cuts be given to those corporations or individuals who are prospering, and let the tax money go where it belongs to those who are suffering, suffering from hunger, suffering from homelessness, suffering from rent evictions, suffering from mortgage foreclosure, suffering from the lack of adequate job opportunities, suffering from a lack of adequate mental health care, suffering because their neighborhoods are deteriorating, suffering because for so long we have been neglected, bypassed, and discounted. Almighty God, we call on you to give the victory to the poor, give the victory to the downtrodden, give the victory to that so that no mother or father will continue to cry out in pain and agony because their child was killed. Be that child two or 22, four or 40. We know that what we do for the least of these, we have done for you. Heal our city, God. Heal Philadelphia, God. This is our prayer in the matchless marvelous and miraculous name. Amen.
Okay, very interesting invocation. Thank you for your spiritual guidance, and actually thank you for your additional commentary.
Thank you, Council President Clark.
Okay. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting, Thursday, May 27, 2021, and Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 27, 2021, be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 27, 2021. Stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to council lady. And our next order of business is communications. And, Mr. Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
Yes, Mr. President. From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on June 9, 2021, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at a session on May 27, 2021. Bill numbers 210074 and 210331. And I am submitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fees simple titled to 2553 Current Street in the first council manic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1931 through 33, 1939, 1943 North Lawrence Street, 431, 433, 434, 438, 443 Arlington Street, 415, 417, 418, 424 West Norris Street, 1707 North Orianna Street, 2914, 2916, 29 through 2924, and 2926 North Second Street located in the seventh council manic district. And resolution number, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 28 Rieger Street and 526 North Seventh Street located in the eighth council manic district, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fees simple titled to certain sitting on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements on situated in the fifth council manic district, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model cities urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 1221 through 1225 North Fourth Street, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1921 South Sixth Street and 2544 South Fifth Street located in the first council manic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2212 Vernon Street and 2214 Vernon Street located in the second council manic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1908 North Leethaw Street and 2547 North Mutter Street located in the seventh council manic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1611 through 41 Ruin Street located in the seventh council manic district, and a resolution appointing George Pigram to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and a resolution appointing Jacqueline Dunn to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and a resolution reappointing Lynette Brown Sewell to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and a resolution appointing Michael Hill to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and a resolution reappointing Robert Zeriski to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an opportunity for public comment, and I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation then being offered by the members today.
Councilwoman Parker offers on behalf of Council President Clark a resolution confirming the appointment of Matthew Stitt to the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2024.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, these conveying title to certain properties located in the fifth council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And on our own behalf, a resolution honoring and recognizing Adam Agawaco for his service to the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gim offers one resolution entitled a resolution urging the Pennsylvania Department of Public Health to restore funding to Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America and recognizing the SCDAA/PDBC's nearly 39-year dedication to providing culturally competent services and to raising awareness of the serious condition of sickle cell disease.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers an ordinance approving the amendment to the Articles of incorporation of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion to extend the term of existence of the district to December 31, 2042.
Further committee.
Councilman Johnson offers a resolution urging Congress to pursue reconciliation and reparations regarding the 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre and the lasting devastation it caused.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez offers three resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1931 through 33, 1939, 1943 North Lawrence Street, 431, 433, 434, 438, 443 Arlington Street, 415, 417, 418, 424 West Norris Street, 1707 North Orianna Street, and 2914, 2916 through 24, and 2926 North Second Street located in the seventh council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1908 North Leethaw Street and 2547 North Mutter Street located in the seventh council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1611 through 1641 Ruin Street located in the seventh council manic district.
Also, next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks and Councilwoman Bass offer a resolution recognizing and honoring the staff of the Philadelphia Department of Parks and Recreation for their dedicated service as essential workers through the COVID-19 pandemic.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding making permit in the Philadelphia Code to permit outdoor dining spaces on city streets and sidewalks and the outdoor entertainment sidewalk cafe rules established during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Today's calendar.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers three resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fees simple titled to certain sitting on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements on situated in the third council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing Saturday, Saturday, June 19, 2021, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Philadelphia. In honor of June 19, 1865, the day when enslaved black people were finally freed in the United States of America, declaring the annual Juneteenth Philly Festival and Johnston House Historic Site Festival as Philadelphia's official Juneteenth celebrations and advocating for the city of Philadelphia to become the official home of the National Juneteenth Independence Day celebration.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution celebrating the life and honoring the memory of Sabour Muhammad.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution honoring and congratulating 19-year-old R&B singer and Philadelphia native Cam Anthony for winning season 20 of The Voice, $100,000, and a recording contract with Universal Music Group.
Next.
Councilman Squilla offers three resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, these conveying fees simple titled to 2553 Current Street in the first council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1921 South Sixth Street and 2544 South Fifth Street located in the first council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2201 East Tyoga Street located in the first council manic district.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending section 94116 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Health Emergency Leave to expire upon termination of the Federal Proclamation 9994 of National Emergency Concerning the Coronavirus Disease 2019 COVID-19 Pandemic.
Mr. Decker, was that, is that a bill or resolution?
That was an ordinance, Mr. President.
That's okay. Further committee.
And a resolution proposing the establishment of the Philadelphia Promise Trust Fund.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions.
Mr. President, I apologize, Mr. President. I'd like to be recognized regarding the Promise Trust Fund.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the years, we've all seen the articles and stories about very wealthy individuals sitting on tiny chairs in kindergarten classrooms with a group of hopeful five-year-olds. The cameras flash, and the smiling children celebrate the announcement of a fund established to get them to college. Not one of them, or some of them, but all of them, understand that this is a game changer. This is something that will give them a real shot, something to look forward to. The notion that college is attainable is a game changer for these kids, and the donors know it, the teachers know, the parents know, and even the five-year-olds know that something big is going to happen to me. Over the years, an article comes out here or there telling their progress until finally an article comes out detailing the end result, which is usually that almost all of those same youth have been accepted to college and are on their way. The fund was established, the promise was kept, and off they go to a world of opportunities and possibilities that otherwise would have likely been unlikely, that would have been unlikely to materialize. Fast forward to 2021, and the need to go big, the need to go bold, the need to fundamentally change the trajectory of our young people who feel they have nothing to aim for. Where's the fund established for their futures? What promises have we made? How can we have expectations of a better, forward-facing path for them if those of us who have gone before them do not build that path? And that's what we're going to do through establishing the Philadelphia Promise Trust Fund. Similar to other funds established in other cities, states, and countries around the world, the Philadelphia Promise Trust Fund would set aside a lump sum of money to invest directly in our youth. As an individual who is eligible turns 18, funds set aside will be available for investment in higher education such as college or trade and technical school, or investment in their first home when they're ready, a business venture, or other future endeavor. We believe the investment of $500 million to youth in target income brackets, zip codes, and/or census tracts will complement the other calls for investment in this budget. These funds could come from the American Rescue Act or from the other grants being received from the Biden administration that are meant to transform our cities and the futures of those left behind. We have a real opportunity to have a robust discussion on what we're really going to do to change the lives and future of young people in the city, and let's not waste a moment when we could begin changing lives immediately. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is the reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green for report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Finance reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, read your report.
To the President, President, and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 210475 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant." And Bill Number 210476 entitled an ordinance approving the amendment of the Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions. And Bill Number 210477 entitled an ordinance approving the Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions. And Bill Number 210508 entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into a provider agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210475, 210476, 210477, and 210508.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210475, 210476, 210477, and 210508. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and it will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports out five bills and three resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Law and Government, which is referred Bill Number 200075 entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Fleet Services. And Bill Number 210329 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 91100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practice Ordinance Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to require the use and disclosure of uniform screening criteria for rental housing and certain related disclosures to prospective rental housing applicants, and to provide that failure to provide such disclosures may be evidence of other unlawful housing and real property practices. And Bill Number 210330 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant by adding a new section 9810 entitled Perspective Tenant Screening Practices to regulate the application and selection process for housing units. And Bill Number 210501 entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to revise provisions related to the manner of selection from eligible lists for vacancies and promotions in the civil service as approved by resolution of the City Council. And Bill Number 210507 entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to provide for a mandatory annual appropriation for the Housing Trust Fund as approved by resolution of the City Council. And Resolution Number 200079 entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to create the Department of Fleet Services to transfer the functions of certain agencies with respect to motor vehicles to the newly created department and to provide for additional duties of the department. And Resolution Number 210514 entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to revise provisions related to the manner of selection from eligible lists for vacancies and promotions in the civil service system. And Resolution Number 210524 entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter providing for a mandatory annual appropriation for the Housing Trust Fund and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 200075, 210329, 210330, 210501, and 210507.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of bills number 200075, 210329, 210330, 210501, 210507. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolution Number 200079 and 210514 and 210524 will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for report from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports out 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, which is referred Bill Number 200662 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1131 Roosevelt Boulevard." And Bill Number 200677 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Property to acquire on behalf of the city and easement in the area bounded by Chestnut Street, 12th Street, Market Street, and 11th Street. And Bill Number 210076 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a parcel of land situated at 2401 Chestnut Street for further conveyance. And Bill Number 210248 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement with St. Agnes MOB for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1930 South Broad Street. And Bill Number 210281 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to acquire free simple title or lesser real estate interest from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to all from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to all or portion of a parcel or parcels of land bordered by Richmond Street to the north northwest, Wee Chief to the east northeast, I-95 to the west, and the Northeast Treatment Plant to the south southeast for water treatment or supply purposes or other purposes. And Bill Number 210282 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire pre simple title or lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Taconi-Holmsberg section of the Delaware River Trail. And Bill Number 210293 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with Chestnut Street Realty Limited Partnership for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1327 through 29 Chestnut Street. And Bill Number 210418 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Kingston Street, I-95, East Banango Street, and Bath Street. And Bill Number 210419 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of the parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Richmond Street, East Butler Street, I-95, and Caster Avenue, commonly known as 3721 Richmond Street. And Bill Number 210424 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1101 Market Street. And Bill Number 210444 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire pre simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise in parcels of land connecting Taconi Street to the Frankfurt Arsenal Boat Launch for public recreational purposes. And Bill Number 210450 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a lease agreement with Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, SEPTA, for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1234 Market Street by the city. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day the 12 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the 12 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of License and Inspections report out five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, which is referred Bill Number 210117 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9, 3700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bouncers by revising definitions of covered establishments and personnel." And Bill Number 210205 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of the Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Additional Special Requirements to establish a program in which the city may perform certain urgent repairs and bill the property owner. And Bill Number 210388 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Trades to modify licensing and conduct requirements and conduct requirements applicable to contractors. And Bill Number 210388, Bill Number 210389 entitled an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code and Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions to revise provisions relating to excavation work and work impacting historic structures, create an excavation contractor license, and institute additional safeguards for property adjoining certain construction activities. And Bill Number 210481 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to modify the requirements to operate a self-service laundry. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day bill numbers 210117, 210205, 210388, 210389, and 210481.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210117, 210205, 210388, 210389, and 210481. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utility.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities report out of this committee one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read the report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, which is referred Bill Number 210505 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner and the Chief Executive Officer of Philadelphia International Airport on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a concession agreement for the management of the Food, Beverage, Retail, and Passenger Services Program at Philadelphia International Airport and an amendment to the ancillary additional services agreement. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 210505.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 210505. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read your report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, which is referred Bill Number 210510 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 6, 200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preventative Medicine, adding a new section offering gift certificates to citizens and property owners of Philadelphia who received vaccinations for COVID-19 in order to incentivize immunizations against the disease. And Bill Number 210511 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 6, 200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preventative Medicine by adding a new section offering vouchers for rebates on city gas and water charges to citizens and property owners in Philadelphia who receive vaccinations for COVID-19 in order to incentivize immunizations against the disease. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 210510 and 210511. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210510 and 210511. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolution on the final passage calendar today.
Council President.
Chair, hold up. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, for the consent agenda. I would like to have Resolutions 523 and 525 removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker? Did you get that?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right. Record shall reflect that.
Council, Council President, I would like to make a similar request.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Yes. I would like to request that a resolution, sorry, 210516 be removed from the consent agenda as well.
Okay. Mr. Decker, you get that? All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. They shall be taken off. Okay, record shall reflect that the request by both Councilman Green and Councilwoman Gimm will have those removed from the consent agenda. Okay, our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I noted that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rule.
Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on. I got a little thing. I got too many messages coming through my ass off colleagues. My colleagues, please stop sending me messages. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are Resolutions Number 210257, 210512, 210513, 210515, 210519, 210520, 210521, 210522, 210526, 210528, 210529, 210530, 210531, 210532, and 210533. And again, Mr. President, Resolutions Numbers 210516, 210523, 210525 will be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. It has been moved in probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the use of consent agendas to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Numbers 200713, 210362, 210425, 210328, 200627, 210333, 210334, 210390, 210391, 210392, 210393, 210394, 210412, 210413, 210414, 210415, 210416, 210422, 210447, and 210448. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker. Calling up. The law tracks. Calling up bills, resolutions only regular second meeting, I'm sorry. I've got a lot of stuff here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Numbers 210215, 210518, 210206, 210081, 210332, 210423, and 210364. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Parker and Majority Leader. Okay, before we proceed with the consideration of the public comment, we will take a brief five to 10 minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers we have for today's speaker. We'll take a brief break. Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we proceed with the consideration of our public comment, we will now have a step around. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, before considering the bills and resolutions, tell you how we're going to consider the public comment. The public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 P.M. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes. But today, because of the volume, we're going to have two minutes per speaker, so please adjust your testimony to reflect a two-minute time limit. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak tend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So once invited to the meeting, asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserved a right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks for the public comment at the meeting. Please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. Because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask, Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list of our speakers today.
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker today is Jose Nunez, commenting on 210081.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, hello. My name is Jose Nunez, and I'm calling on Bill Number 210081. Thank you, council members. I like to say that I oppose this bill. I do agree in some form of regulation, but as the current bill is being proposed, I don't agree. I'm an operator of short-term rentals in Rittenhouse. I'm a minority small business owner. Now, these are the reasons why I disagree with the bill, particularly the CMX3 component. Parties, my units are small, mostly all studios, 400 square feet. I limit it to two people max. I don't have any large homes. I've never had an issue with parties. I see as the city opens, more people are going to go out to nightclubs instead of try to party at home because of the COVID restrictions. Garbage, I operate in small buildings. Trash isn't a problem. Garbage, I operate in small buildings. Trash isn't a problem. Now, the affordable housing component in regards to S T R. I'm in center city. I'm in Rittenhouse, not a low income area. Rents are higher. Affordable housing rental units have more to do with providing builders, developers with low income tax credit and abatements than with short term rentals. Perhaps introducing a bill that mandates developers to provide certain percentage of their units to mixed use income families similar to New York City. If, if anything, the current price of construction lumber affects the, the prices of affordable house, housing building. Now, given these reasons, it would come to agree that the bill in its current state would negatively impact me and is not effective. Like I like to say, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We house, we hosted frontline workers while hotels were closed. Now they're the only ones to benefit. Now, this would cause undue hardship to me and my family, resulting in losing ninety percent of my income. I plead and I beg this committee and its members to push this vote back at least until September. Let's sit down and discuss solutions, have, and have meaningful conversations. Let's sit down and collaborate. As your constituents, we're asking for a voice. Help us help you working together for the mutual benefit of the city, its residents. We will make Philadelphia not just recover from the pandemic, but thrive. Sharing our city, sharing our history, and sharing our progressive ideologies, and sharing our homes and our vision of a prosperous Philadelphia. I'm proud to be a resident, but prouder that you, as our representatives, would do your best to help your city, your district, your constituents, your families. Make the right choice. I believe in all of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jennifer Jordan, commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony. My name is Jennifer Jordan. I have spoken in a, in a, in opposition of this bill, two one zero zero eight one, over the course of this year. I have commented about my hosting standards in, in previous calls, so I won't mention it today. But I wanted to share the story to the people who work with me, um, as well as my guests. I hire cleaners and assistants to help me keep my short term rental properties in good shape. Most of the people I hire are supporting their families with the income they make with me. Some cleaners work, um, with me in addition to their day jobs. They work to help pay down their student loans, save for travel, or save to buy a car. Every person I hire cares about Philadelphia and each of the properties they care for with me. They are real people who would be negatively impacted by this bill. As for my guests, my guests come to Philly for many reasons. They are full, they are fully vaccinated folks visiting family members for the first time this year. And they picked the neighborhoods where hotels don't exist to visit their family. They're international travelers coming to the U S to get vaccinated. Many guests are residents of nearby cities looking for a change of, of place. Many guests have worked remotely over the, um, last year. And they make the rental their home base and their home away from home. Um, they also support local businesses. Um, I, I host people with food allergies who can, cannot cook their meals, um, who need to cook their meals indoors and, uh, family seeking treatment in our world-class hospitals. They need the privacy of a home and the amenities that go with it. Short term rental, rental is creating an industry as well as, um, an asset to the city. Uh, thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Louis Baum, commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Good afternoon. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Louis Baum, B A U M. Uh, good morning, Mister, good afternoon, Mister President, council members and guests. My name, I represent the forty-sixth ward Democratic R C O. Because written testimony has been emailed to council, I will limit my remarks. Bill twenty one zero zero eight one contains good ideas for improving processes. However, we are asking that the bill be amended in two crucial ways prior to passage. The bill should not be approved unless amended, A, to protect, rather than terminate, the role of long-term residential communities in decision-making by restoring the zoning use permit requirement that presently applies. If not amended, this bill will, will remove this only point of community input. And B, assure that robust requirements for ongoing compliance, monitoring, and enforcement are designed and published, and that responsibilities are clear. This includes handling of neighbor complaints. No doubt, council members are aware of the level of problems here, and we have firsthand experience ourselves. In general, we urge council to preserve our communities' voices by never allowing short term rentals by right in residential districts. Council must assured, ensure that the city protects our community structure and community life from impact and harm, including that caused by undesirable incursion of lo- short term housing. Without community participation, without other provisions limiting the unwanted penetration of short term housing in residential communities, we risk rampant speculation in short term housing, which will undermine and irrevocably decay our long-term communities. Communities experiencing gentrification pressure are at higher risk that locally clustered short term operations will create de facto blockbusting. We thank you in advance for your attention and your continued support of the needs of our existing long-term communities.
Thank, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Nick Schmidt, commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Good afternoon. Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Council. My name is Nick Schmidt. Uh, I am against bill two one zero zero eight one. Uh, my wife and I are both, uh, frontline healthcare workers. We're registered nurses who work in critical care. We've served the Philadelphia community for years. We have two kids under the age of three years old, and this past year, we purchased a legal duplex. Um, we're responsible hosts who closely monitor our guests as well as maintain our property. We regular, regularly, uh, clean up trash on our streets and interact with neighbors in our parks and community. My concerns are related to the additional regulations and licenses being required by hosts and limiting the ability of people to responsibly rent their homes based on their zoning. The income we receive from guests not only goes to our mortgage, allowing us the ability to live in the city close to the hospitals we work at. It pays taxes to the city. It pays cleaners above minimum wage, and it allows tourists to come from out of town to spend money at restaurants and stores, as well as visits families for graduations and funerals. I believe there are ways that, uh, hosts can continue doing business responsibly without disrupting surrounding neighborhoods and without compromising data. I urge you to carefully consider the effects and limitations and the restrictions being proposed, and seeks for you to work with responsible hosts, looking for successful outcomes for both the city and the hosts. As nurses who directly care for countless COVID patients, as well as critically injured gunshot victims at a time when gun violence is at an all time high, please realize that the implications of your restrictions could cause us, as well as many other essential workers and upstanding citizens who supplement their income through hosting short term rentals to have to relocate and leave neighborhoods that Philly needs us in. We thank you for your consideration. Have a good day.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Chris Carloan, commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Good morning, Councilman and Councilwoman. My name is Chris Carloan. I operate a housekeeping business in the city of Philadelphia. I'm here in opposition of bill two one zero zero eight one on behalf of the short term rental ecosystem. While hosts, specifically problem hosts, are the target of this bill, we're failing to acknowledge the collateral damage that all of the folks behind the scenes that make hosting possible would encounter. When a guest stays in a property locally, my team of housekeepers clean it before and after a stay. The neighborhood handyman buys tools at the local hardware store to make the repairs. The laundromat down the street cleans the linens. Local trash removal contractors handle excess trash. Local baristas serve guests coffee. The list goes on and on. Without providing us, your local experts, the opportunity to share our insight into this bill, a blanket ruling such as this would negatively impact working families across the city. My staff, for example, consist of ninety percent single mothers. These staff members on, earn on average twenty-two dollars per hour as a housekeeper on a W two. We pay our business taxes to the city. We pay our employment taxes. We provide labor contracts to each staff member as required by the city. We do our part to uphold the community so that we can feed our families with the earnings our hard work produces. This bill would decimate many roles for hardworking families that I have mentioned here before you. Collectively, the constituents before you have served millions of guests, and we're experts at what we do. From vetting guests to preventing parties to self policing community standards, we're here to say we want to help the city get rid of its bad actors while working together to save thousands of jobs. We're here at your disposal to share knowledge and methodologies that have worked well in other cities, and we're preparing self policing actions and community-based activities to promote responsible hosting. I ask that the council simply pauses before proceeding and ask themselves if they benefit from speaking with local experts to understand how we can all better work together to protect our city and continue to responsibly host guests and their families. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Robert Nunez, commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Yes, hello. My name is Robert Nunez. Um, and, yes, hi. Uh, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, no problem. Pardon. Uh, thank you, City Council. Uh, my name is Robert Nunez, and I'm in opposition of bill two zero zero eight one. As an owner operator here in the city of Philadelphia, I, I was on call the last time that this call took place and, and listening today. And one of the things I think that being missed is we as, as the residents of Philadelphia, the homeowners and the taxpayers and the voters, we also, uh, have rent, regular rentals that we provide to the, to the working individuals or to families in the city. But when we encounter problems with these individuals, with these tenants, uh, they may have their, their birthday party, their parties, their events, their problems, their home, whatever the case is, these situations can go on for years at a time with one tenant or one property. Whereas being a short term rental operator, we can actually re- remedy the situation instantly by removing a bad actor in, in our property at that moment. That can happen with a regular tenant. And sometimes, as the gentleman a couple of slots earlier was saying about being not, being in support of, of the bill and, and ending short term renting in some of the neighborhoods, that's not actually correct, because many neighborhoods are improving because of the different diversity and, and magnitude of different type of people that are coming through the communities, supporting the local businesses, supporting the businesses and the operators who are hiring people that are from the communities. It's a ripple effect. As the gentleman right before me said, it's an ecosystem. Short term renting is not a fad. It's not a, something that's just passing by. It's a way of life. Individuals find themselves displaced because of emergencies, and they wind up relocating to a short term rental situation until they get back on their feet and they get their family lives back together again. People relocating for work, people selling a property and waiting for the next property to buy to move in with their families. Individuals coming to visit the city, people coming to work in the city. It's not a tourism party vibe mentality. It's, it's unfair to couple short term renting with a student rental dorm mentality of our college kids have parties and events. That is not happening in the majority of the cases. We understand that there are minimal cases, so we want to support short term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Anna Lopez, com- commenting on two one zero zero eight one.
Good morning.
She is not on the.
Not on.
Sorry, President. She's not on the line. The next person on the line is dormant.
Go ahead. Hold the next person.
Sam Oropiza.
He's also not on the line.
Um.
David Dorman.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dave Dorman. I'm calling in reference to bill number two ten four thirty-four. A former resident of Philadelphia. I lived there until nineteen seventy-two. My father gave his life in the line of service as an officer, Philadelphia. I'm calling in reference to health benefits and the obvious benefits of this bill. I'm an R N now, and that just give you a little overview. It would, uh, increase the health of the officers doing the training, improve cardiovascular health, improve conditioning, balance agility, would increase strength and confidence in the officers. The health benefits go on and on, including decrease of heart disease, stroke, and other diseases like diabetes, lower cholesterol. You're saving a ton in healthcare costs, and that benefits almost immediately. If you want to take the streets of Philadelphia back, you have to take your cuffs off for the officers and let them do what they're trained to do. I appreciate your time on this, and I expect that this bill would improve community relations and lower increased levels and incidences of lethal force that are needed. I thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration on this.
The next speaker is Sharon Krez.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, she is not on the line. Uh, no, it's Jennifer. So the next one is, uh, Strauss.
The next speaker is Chris Strauss.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Hello, my name is Christopher Strauss. To confirm, I did not, um, this is just a random call, so I wasn't expecting to speak. But I think that this bill is very important to get passed. Um, we should be equipping the Philadelphia police force with as many tools as possible so they can come into situations without having to necessarily use legal force, but have the tools equipped to help them solve situations that they need to use force, right? Not everything calls for a gun, but having the ability to utilize jujitsu or specialize in some of the, the martial arts could really help, help some situations out. Um, like the gentleman said before, we absolutely have to uncuff our police officers, let them start cleaning up our streets of Philadelphia because they are slowly becoming very dangerous. And yeah, that's, that's really my testimony. You guys should definitely pass this. It's kind of common sense.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Next speaker is Matthew Devine.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, Council President, the next two are also not on the line, so the next one would be Rachel.
Rachel Gallegos.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record and pro- please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Gallegos. I'm a senior staff attorney at Community Legal Services. Um, I work in the Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit at C L S. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment in support of resolution two one zero five one three, urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to appropriate the full three hundred and fifty million dollars from the Federal Homeowner Assistance Fund as soon as possible without imposing additional restrictions. On behalf of its low income homeowner clients, C L S is grateful for council's leadership and fighting to ensure that Philadelphia remains a city of homeowners. We are especially grateful for council member Parker's stalwart leadership on this issue and thank her for authoring this resolution. Over seventy thousand homeowners across Pennsylvania are now seriously delinquent on their mortgages because of the pandemic, including tens of thousands here in Philadelphia. Fortunately, help is on the way. The American Rescue Plan passed by Congress in March includes three hundred and fifty million dollars in funding for Pennsylvania to help low and moderate income homeowners who have been affected by the pandemic. This money will truly be a lifesaver for homeowners who have lost jobs, tapped savings, and borrowed money from family and friends in order to avoid foreclosure. But now Harrisburg needs to take two important steps. First, the General Assembly must pass an appropriations bill sending the money to P H F A to administer the program. Second, state policymakers need to draft and submit a plan on how to spend the money. This must be done by the end of this month. What exactly will this money mean? What exactly will this money mean for homeowners? It will mean that restaurant servers who lost hours, fell behind on their mortgages, but are now back to work can get help paying off back mortgage arrears and save their homes. It will mean that the senior with the reverse mortgage who helped her grandchildren during the pandemic but is now facing a foreclosure of her own because she wasn't able to keep up with the taxes and insurance will get help to repay those debts and save her home. It will mean the family who has had to cut back on work when their childcare provider closed only to rack up hundreds of dollars in unpaid water, gas, and electric bills will help, uh, get help coming current on their utilities. And it will mean that homeowners, especially homeowners of color, who have been nearly twice as likely as white homeowners to become unemployed during the pandemic, will be able to save their homes. In short, it will mean that thousands of homeowners, not just in Philadelphia but across Pennsylvania, who suffered economic hardship through no fault of their own, will receive assistance. But homeowners will not be able to access the Homeowner Assistance Fund until the General Assembly acts. Once again, Community Legal Services, on behalf of its low-income homeowners, thanks Councilmember Parker for introducing this resolution and urges that the resolution be adopted because although help is on the way, Philadelphia homeowners are running out of time and swift state action is desperately needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Adam Goldman.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, good morning, Council President and Council Members. My name is Adam Goldman. I'm a housing counselor at the Philadelphia Unemployment Project. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution two one zero five one three, calling on the PA General Assembly to appropriate the full three hundred and fifty million dollars from the Federal Homeowner Assistance Fund as soon as possible. I'd like to thank you for allowing me this time to speak, and I would particularly like to thank Councilwoman Parker for her leadership on this issue and for fighting to protect struggling homeowners in Philadelphia. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, tens of thousands of homeowners across the state have fallen behind on their mortgages. According to an April twenty twenty-one Black Knight report, even as national mortgage delinquency rates have begun to lower in recent months, there are still four times as many mortgages that are ninety days or more past due as there were prior to the pandemic. While things are slowly improving for homeowners, we're far from out of the woods. But now we have a lifeline coming in the form of three hundred and fifty million dollars slated for Pennsylvania through the Homeowner Assistance Fund, which is part of the American Rescue Plan. The fund is intended to help homeowners avoid foreclosure by paying their delinquent mortgages, real estate taxes, utilities, and other related expenses. It's going to take time for this program to get up and running. The state has, has to submit a plan to the U.S. Treasury, and Treasury has to approve the plan. And as we all know, programs like this take time to set up before they can begin taking applications. This is why we can't afford any unnecessary delays. Part of the process in our state is that the General Assembly has to appropriate the funds, and the PA General Assembly goes home for the summer at the end of June. This is why we are urging them to appropriate the funds by June thirtieth without additional restrictions so that the state can start getting money out to struggling homeowners as soon as possible. This past year has been extremely difficult, and even as many homeowners entered into forbearance agreements with their mortgage companies, they saw their delinquencies grow higher and higher each month while the pandemic grounded the economy to a halt. Now these homeowners need a lifeline, and they need it without delay. So thank you, Councilwoman Parker, for inter, introducing this resolution, and thank you to the rest of City Council for lending your support to homeowners across the city and state.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Margot, Margot Schall.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please, just, please proceed.
Hi, yes, this is Margot Schall. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Hi, yes, I'm speaking today as a member of Power Interface and as a former school district teacher in support of the Fair Funding Resolution. Many histories try to tell us that nineteen fifty-four was the year that schools were funded equally, but any way you look at Pennsylvania's schools shows that racial inequality persists. So why is this? First reason is there's not enough state funding. Pennsylvania only contributes about thirty-five percent, which is less than almost any state, and leaves local districts to pick up the slack. This includes us in Philly. Not only is there not enough funding, but the funding is racially biased. Districts with more white students receive more than their fair share of funding. Districts with more black and brown students receive less. Racial disparity in funding exists even when poverty is taken into account. And even more enraging, a fair funding formula has been created. About six years ago, the Funding Commission in Harrisburg made a budget that took into account the number of students, wealth, and local taxing capacity, multilingualism, and population sparsity. And this would eliminate racial disparities, but ninety percent of the funding does not go through this formula. So what does this mean for students in our district? Philadelphia is hugely short-changed. We would get four hundred million dollars this year if money was fairly distributed. Over two billion in the past six years since the funding formula was passed. Resources matter, and adequate funding boosts students' performance. We know that Lower Marion schools right across city line are funded almost twice as much as Philadelphia's. Teaching in our schools, it was clear that we did not have the resources students should have. A part-time nurse when students might class with full-time diabetes, inheriting a classroom library with empty shelves, class sizes that always pushed the limit. Instead, counselors and nurses, music and arts and technology, smaller class sizes, healthy school buildings, this is what we expect. We call on City Council today to use your voice in demanding that young people in Philly receive fair education funding. Thank you to the council members who introduced the resolution and to all for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Reverend McKinley Sims.
Good morning. I'm Reverend McKinley Sims. I'm Reverend McKinley Sims. I'm also a former teacher and basketball coach, though I serve the Church of the Restoration in Mount Airy right now. And I'm rising in support of two one zero five one six, calling on the General Assembly to provide the full fair funding to all K through twelve schools in Pennsylvania. In my classroom when I was a teacher, I had a saying that "fair ain't equal." And when we call on the General Assembly to provide fair funding, that means it may not be equal, and that means that white folks like me may see less dollars going to their schools. And that might feel like discrimination, but y'all, that is in fact equity in action. There's been a lot of buzzword around equity this past year in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Equity means everyone gets what they need to thrive, and those who have enough don't get no more. Sometimes love in my business looks like sacrifice, and sometimes love looks like not getting exactly what you want, but love always looks like justice. Friends, this is our chance, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do the right thing, the moral thing. So as a former basketball coach, I am urging the City Council to use your voice, put the ball in Harrisburg's court, and don't let up on a John Chaney-like press. History has its eyes on us, so let us demand the right thing be done, and let's do the right thing for our kids. Just as fair doesn't mean equal, we have that saying, "y'all means all." So when I say "y'all," I'm talking about all of us and for all of our kids. History has its eyes on us. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sharon Perry Thomas.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony. Morning. Are you connected?
Yes, I am. I'm Sharon Perry Thomas, and I am the co-founder of the Dashboard Alliance for Cannabis Opportunities in San Francisco.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Are you able to hear me now?
Much better, much better.
Okay, perfect. Yes, I am Sharon Perry Thomas, and I am the co-founder of Daco, the Dashboard Alliance for Cannabis Opportunities. And we've hosted, hosted a cannabis conference, um, at Temple University for black and brown communities, exposing them to the opportunities in cannabis since twenty eighteen. As the social equity advocate for All Together Now, PA, we are working to create a local supply chain and ownership throughout the state of Pennsylvania, especially in cannabis. I'm for Bill two one zero two oh six, sponsored by Councilmember Garrett Green. This legislation will give the voters of Philadelphia a voice to call on the governor and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to decriminalize, to regulate, and to tax the sales of cannabis to adults over the age of twenty-one, just like our neighboring mid-Atlantic states. As an MBA candidate in the pharmaceutical and healthcare, myrrh and cannabis program at the University of the Sciences, we often analyze the growth of the industry as this business expands rapidly across the state. Between April twenty twenty and March twenty twenty-one, medical cannabis brought in nine hundred and nine point four million dollars with the state's medical program. We have one of the best in the country, and that definitely should be guarded. Nationally, adult-use segments dominate the cannabis market, bringing in over sixty percent revenue shares from adult-use cannabis. What would this revenue increase look like for our city, for our state? Maine just reached nearly five point four million dollars last month, just in one month, the month of May. This is a real opportunity for our communities to benefit from the taxation created by a regulated market. I ask City Councilmembers to look at the surrounding states like Virginia, New York, and New Jersey, and I urge them to have Harrisburg create an equitable policy. I'm Sharon Perry Thomas, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tahib Chappell, commenting on two one zero two oh six and two one zero two one five.
Morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Tahib Chappell. He/him pronouns. I'm testifying in support for Bill two one zero two zero six, sponsored by Councilmember Derek Green. For the past decade, I've been using marijuana as a patient to help with my autoimmune deficiency disorder called ulcerative colitis. Beyond being a medical marijuana patient, I'm also a Philadelphia cannabis journalist who's reported on ongoing injustices and inequities within the multi-billion-dollar cannabis industry. My recent op-ed published in the Philadelphia Inquirer on four twenty laid a case for our city and the state to consider legalization. I've also worked at a local medical marijuana dispensary in Philly and have sev, and have served hundreds of medical marijuana patients who have suffered from various illnesses and used the plant to find relief. Given all of this, I am here to explain my support for this bill as one of the many organizers that's part of the new Philadelphia Cannabis Business Association, PCBA, an association that is organizing to reverse the stigma of marijuana through education, advocate for truth on the plant using information that is grounded in scientific facts and history, and repair the harm of the failed war on drugs has inflicted on black and brown communities in the city. Bill two one zero two zero six is common sense. I believe it allows Philadelphians to engage in the best form of democracy and deliberation, using their constitutional right to vote to show whether they truly want Harrisburg to legalize, tax, and regulate cannabis for adults twenty-one and older. To inhibit Philadelphians from even weighing in on this important issue reminds me of voter disenfranchisement, something that we're seeing across the country right now and something that I think our city prides itself on actively fighting against. I'll wrap up my support for Bill two one zero two zero six with a few facts for consideration. It's a fact that across Pennsylvania, nearly sixty percent of adults support the complete legalization of marijuana, according to a Mullenberg College this year. However, we don't have any specific data for Philly, but we should. This year, leafly, one of the most reputable cannabis news outlets in the country said that a fully legal Pennsylvania market could see two point three to three point three billion in revenue within three to five years, which translates to roughly five hundred million in annual tax revenue and would support between thirty-three thousand and forty-seven thousand legal cannabis jobs. If that legal cannabis market existed today, Pennsylvania would be America's third-largest cannabis industry, behind only California and Colorado. The question is, where does Philadelphia stand and where will Philly be when legalization happens? Let Philadelphians decide if we want and are ready for legalization. National and state data shows which way the wind is blowing. Let the city make a statement and make it clear for all to see where we stand in November. Please support and pass Bill two one zero two zero six. PCBA is here to help change the narrative on cannabis. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tahib Smith, commenting on two one zero two oh six and two one zero two...
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed.
Good morning. My name is Tahib Smith. I'm a Philadelphia resident, third generation. I'm also a partner and the collective, Smith &amp; Moller, and Little Giant Creative. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of All Together Now, PA, where I serve as a founding advisory board member to my friend and colleague Judy Wicks. Um, I'm gonna be brief, and a couple things I think everyone should be aware of. Nationally, it's estimated that the cannabis legal sales was seven point five billion dollars. That's a rise from twelve point one billion dollars last year, and I'm sorry, in two thousand and nineteen. In Pennsylvania, um, black and brown cities like Philadelphia and Pittsburgh are where African-American entrepreneurs have the least amount of market share. We are in a transformative time in history where the cannabis market is actually one of the few spaces where people have the ability to create wealth. Also, I will say, since the nineteen nineties, the lion's share of people who have been locked up, incarcerated, and suffered from illogical laws having to do with cannabis have been African-Americans. So I implore a predominantly POC council to move forward and decriminalize this because it has the potentiality to affect us in a positive perspective as entrepreneurs if we hold Harrisburg accountable and make these policies actually equitable. But it is act, absolutely absurd to continually penalize particularly African-Americans for something that is widely accepted throughout culture. We, we make songs about it, we make funny movies about it, we laugh when white children get to smoke weed in a place like Lower Marion, and they probably get a ride home. But in Philadelphia, through laws like stop and search, African-Americans are penalized and then monetized for something that we should no longer hope, hope to. Um, I thank you for your time. I thank you, uh, Councilmember Derek Green for bringing this to our attention, and I implore you to move forward in a progressive way that's beneficial to the citizens of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Bill Cobb, commenting on two one zero two oh six and two one zero two one five.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Bill Cobb, peace and love. Um, I'm calling to support Bill number two one zero two oh six, introduced March eleventh by Councilmember Mark, uh, Derek Green. Um, as a lifelong resident of fifty-one years in the city of Philadelphia, a former member of the City of Philadelphia Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform, and then my last position as a National Deputy Director at the American Civil Liberties Union, where I ran their largest campaign to reduce our nation jails and prison populations in half while combating racial disparities in the criminal justice system. I implore us to give the voters in the city of Philadelphia an opportunity to express their political will and send that message to the governor and to the state legislature so that we don't have to speak about the anecdotal evidence that we have of wanting legalization here in the city of Philadelphia and the state of Pennsylvania, but so that the voters of Philadelphia will be able to demonstrate their political will and our desire to transform our city, our quality of life, increase public safety, and stop hunting, capturing, killing people for their love and their relationship with the plant. As a disabled veteran who is now a cannabis user as the medical side, I would greatly appreciate other individuals who don't have the money to engage in the medical program and who don't have, um, medical disabilities, um, that have been designated by doctors to have the opportunity to engage in recreational usage, and the opportunity for us to go to the polls in November and demonstrate that, I think will powerfully transform, um, our inability to take advantage of this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get ahead of every, so many of states, legalize it on the medicinal side, legalize it on the recreational side, and also contribute positively to stopping the hunt and capture and killing of black and brown people in marginalized neighborhoods and communities that have been most eviscerated by the brutal assaults and attack of the war on drugs in our communities and neighborhoods. So once again, I'm in support of the legislation. I ask you all to do so as well.
That's morning. We appreciate it.
Judy Wicks, commenting on two one zero two oh six and two one zero two one five.
Morning. Uh, state your name.
Good morning.
Please proceed.
Good morning. My name is... Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Judy Wicks. I live in Philadelphia in the 8th Ward. I am speaking in favor of Bill 210206. I am a retired entrepreneur and the founder of All Together Now Pennsylvania, a nonprofit with a mission to relocalize supply chains producing our basic needs, including food, clothing, building materials, and plant medicines. Our work includes the Pot Profits for Pennsylvanians Project, PPPP, which advocates state legislation for legalizing adult-use cannabis that is regulated and taxed to benefit Black and Brown communities damaged by the failed war on drugs, as well as to benefit our small rural farmers. Currently, the medical marijuana industry in our state is almost exclusively owned by an oligarchy of distant corporations, which means that last year nearly $910 million in medical marijuana sales went from the pockets of Pennsylvania consumers to multi-state corporations headquarters in such places as Florida and Chicago. We cannot allow this to happen with the regulation of non-medical adult-use cannabis. Too much is at stake. The referendum to put the question of decriminalization, regulation, and taxation on the November ballot is important because Philadelphia citizens will become aware of the issue, engage in conversation, and begin to make our voices heard on this important issue. And we must continue to organize and speak out to the state legislature that this new industry must benefit Philadelphia citizens and not the outside multi-state corporations that currently control the medical marijuana market. I view cannabis prohibition as yet another form of white supremacy used to repress, punish, and hold back our citizens because of the color of their skin. This must stop, and in its place, legislation be designed to lift up these same communities by directing economic opportunity in this new industry to the people who have suffered unjustly from prohibition. After the legalization of adult-use cannabis sales in Pennsylvania are estimated to be $2 to $3 billion a year. Let's organize Philadelphians to demand equitable legislation. Placing a referendum on the November ballot is a great first step to start that citywide conversation and make our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Dozi Nivonu commenting on 210206 and 210215.
Morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Council President, they are not on the line.
Ron Millward commenting on 210206 and 210215.
Hello. Good afternoon, and thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I am Ron Millward, the founder of Balanced Veterans. We are a nonprofit educating, advocating, and empowering veterans on the use of alternative therapies for their health and transition from service. I myself am a disabled combat veteran 100%. I live in Brocksborough, Pennsylvania, and cannabis has completely changed my life. It has allowed me excuse me, I'm getting a bit emotional. Excuse me. I just came from an emergency dental appointment, and without cannabis, I would have not been able to get there to deal with my PTSD and my anxiety, and then to be able to have this phone call, so I am grateful for this. But this plan is very powerful, and it has been used to really just be a tool of control, and we need to have full access. We are not able to access this. The cost and affordability is not there. Why can we not be able to have license for, you know, maybe a disabled veteran to get into the program, to be able to have an opportunity to also, you know, make a life for themselves? I believe that the decriminalization is at the forefront of what must happen right now for cannabis, and I believe that the legislation should be on the next ballot. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Deanna Williams commenting on 210515.
Morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Deanna Williams. I am calling regarding Resolution 21051. Greetings, President Clark, distinguished members of city council, and much respect to Councilwoman at-large Catherine Gilmore Richardson. She has presented to council 210515 in consideration to acknowledge Philadelphia June Black Music Month. Forty-two years ago, June 7, 1979, President Jimmy Carter, at the encouragement of the Black Music Association, hosted a celebratory event on the South Lawn of the White House with performances by Billy Eckstein, Chuck Berry, Evelyn Champagne King, Andre Crouch, Sarah Jordan Powell, Philly's own MFSB conducted by Dexter Wanzel. That day, the president declared June as Black Music Month, a period of time where we could reflect on the enormous contributions of Black creatives, of America's indigenous musical arts forms, and this multi-billion-dollar industry. In fact, President Biden just released a proclamation stating June is Black Music Month and suggested that all of our citizens celebrate it as one of our greatest exports around planet Earth. As co-founder of Black Music Month with Ed Wright and notable Philadelphian, Rock and Roll Hall of Famer, industry and multiple Grammy winner Kenny Gamble, we wish to celebrate Philadelphia's illustrious legacy, past and present, as a music mecca since our country's very founding. The sound of Philadelphia is a well-received entity that has been appreciated by many music lovers. We are encouraging city council to recognize the music community, the Recording Academy, known to many as the organization that produces the Grammy Awards, with our new president, Don T. We want to applaud all of those mentioned in this resolution and all others whose names were not included, but we ask that city council celebrate and join Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson's resolution to have Philadelphia annually recognize June as Black Music Month. Thank you so much, President Clark. Thank you, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, for your leadership in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Don T. Morelli commenting on 210515.
I am Don T. Good morning. Good morning, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, President Clark, and highly regarded council members. What an honor to speak with you today. As the newly-elected president for the Recording Academy Philadelphia Chapter, known as the Grammys, I represent music creators and music professionals in the Philadelphia community. I represent all music creators in my chapter, and I represent the culture, Black music, my own and my family's grand contributions to Black music history. My late father is the legendary Philly singer Lee Andrews. My brother is legendary drummer Questa Love of The Roots, both of whom are Philly Walk of Fame Avenue of the Arts inductees. I come to my present leadership position within the Recording Academy as a songwriter, vocalist, touring performer, producer, label owner, author, and entrepreneur. I run my own recording studio. Creativity is what informs my world. As president of the chapter, it is my duty to not only see that the rights of music makers be protected, but more, to see that music creators be celebrated, to see that the most innovative of these be illuminated and elevated. And it is for this reason I give my full and entire support to the Resolution 210515 before you and ask you, esteemed members of council, for your consideration in recognizing June as African-American Music Appreciation Month, or as we all know it, Black Music Month. I am honored to have been extended the invitation to speak today alongside past president, current governor of my Philly Board, and Black Music Month founder, Deanna Williams. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lauren Taliz commenting on 210515.
Morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Council President, they are not on the line.
Thank you. Next.
Helen Brumer commenting on 210515.
Morning. State your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony.
Helen Brumer. The next speaker is Carol Riddick commenting on 210515.
Good morning. Good morning. Good day, everyone. My name is Carol Riddick, and I am in full support of Resolution 210515. I am a vocalist, a songwriter, an educator, a Renaissance woman, and a staunch advocate for the arts and artists. I want to begin by thanking Councilwoman at-large Catherine Gilmore Richardson for presenting this resolution to recognize June as Black Music Month. Philadelphia, Pennsylvania is rich with longstanding contributions from African-American culture, and I feel that recognition from the city in which the concept of Black Music Month was born is the perfect catalyst for support for acknowledgement of our culture, its contributions, both artistic and economically, and to the encouragement to educate about the diversity in Black music from which our city, our country, the world has and continues to benefit. I'd also like to recognize and thank President Darrell Clark. I ask that you strongly consider and do support why not take pride as the birthplace of what is Black Music Month. I'd just like to say happy Black Music Month to you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Council President, we have Brumer on the line.
Okay. The names.
Helen Brumer.
Yes, this is Helen Brumer speaking, and I'd like to say thank you so much for honoring the rich culture of African-American music and what we have contributed as a people here in America with soul, R&B, hip-hop, jazz, gospel, house, bebop. It is wonderful to be recognized by our city of Philadelphia, brotherly love and sisterly affection, and we are happy to be here, even though it's virtual and on the phone. But I'd like to thank our city so much for honoring, and I'm born and raised here. My grandmother's born and raised here. My grandfather's born and raised here, and they all were amazing musicians, and thank you to Deanna Williams, Mr. Gamble, and also Chaka Fatah. Thank you so much, and I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We really appreciate it. Okay.
I believe there are no other speakers, Mr. President. No more? Okay.
Well, thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session, and we now want to proceed with our calendar. We now want to consider today's resolution consent agenda. So I ask the clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda, and after each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution consent agenda. Council President may be recognized. My fault. Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I respectfully ask that Bill Number 210204 be added to the final passage calendar for today, please.
Okay. Mr. Decker.
Not necessarily consent.
You say bill. We only have it.
It's a bill, Mr. President. I'll add it to the regular final passage calendar.
Thank you. And chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson. Councilwoman, did you want to be recognized?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to be recognized quickly on a resolution that is on the consent agenda for today. I wanted to personally acknowledge and thank Phyllis Sade, we know her as Shade, for her service on the Board of Trustees for the Free Library of Philadelphia. And again, we know her as our former colleague and our trusted partner in council while she was working under your leadership, Mr. President, as our CFO. But she was also a professor and mentor to our former CFO, Matt Stitt. And she was really an invaluable cog in the wheel relative to the machinations of our city council and city government. And with all of her robust financial experience across agencies, not only here in the city of Philadelphia, but during her time in Birmingham, Alabama, Councilmember Green, National League of Cities, she has truly become a value partner and a real value add to the board. And right now, we know Shade as our government relations partner at American Airlines, but she's also served on the library's board and has co-led their efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we know that that will be a real integral part of ensuring that the Free Library of Philadelphia continues to center the voices of its employees and all the patrons at the library. But yet, with all of this experience, Mr. President, her most important and valued role is mother to Yemi. So, Mr. President, as a former team leadership assistant in the LEAP program at Winfield Library 20 years ago this year, and as a fellow working mom, it truly brought me great joy to introduce this resolution on behalf of Shade with her elevation to Board President. And I just wanted to make those remarks prior to the resolution being voted on during the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Awesome, awesome lady. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. We're motioning to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of Mr. President, the clerk has to read the title for us.
Yeah, you stopped mid-script, Mr. President. If we could take that from the top, that would be good.
I'm really having a moment today. I'm just starting over, and I'll ask the clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda that will now read the titles of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution Number 210257 entitled a resolution recognizing and congratulating Phyllis Sade A. Alana-Palman Lewis on her election as chair of the Board of Trustees to the Free Library of Philadelphia. A resolution number 210512 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Bible City's urban renewal area identified by its number and street address as 1221 through 1225 North Fourth Street. And Resolution Number 210513 entitled a resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to appropriate the full $350 million from the Federal Homeowner Assistance Fund as soon as possible without imposing additional restrictions. And Resolution Number 210515 entitled a resolution recognizing June as African-American Music Appreciation Month to celebrate the African-American musical influences that comprise an essential part of our nation's treasured cultural heritage. And Resolution Number 210519 entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to certain city or lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 7th Councilman District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fees simple titled to such properties. And Resolution Number 210520 entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple title to certain city or lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 7th Councilman District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fees simple titled to such properties. And Resolution Number 210521 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2216 North Third Street located in the 7th Councilman District. And Resolution Number 210522 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1905 North Phillips Street and 1909 North Lawrence Street located in the 7th Councilman District. And Resolution Number 210526 entitled a resolution honoring the business owners of color receiving Comcast Rise Investment Fund grants and in-kind support and recognizing that businesses owned by people of color are key to equitable growth and recovery in Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210528 entitled a resolution recognizing the month of May as celiac disease awareness month in Philadelphia and honoring eight-year-old Philadelphian Jax Barry for shining a national light on ABC's World News Tonight with David Muir on the need for increased federal funding for celiac research and federally mandated labeling of gluten on all packaged foods. And Resolution Number 210529 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating the Carver Engineering and Science High School boys bowling team on their successful 2020-2021. on their successful 2020-2021 season and first-ever championship win. And Resolution Number 210530 entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing Teresa Alisia on the occasion of her retirement following 25 years of loyal and dedicated service to the residents of this 175th Legislative District. And Resolution Number 210531 entitled a resolution also naming Bainbridge Street between 8th and 9th Streets as Henry L. Phillips Way. And Resolution Number 210532 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1740 Howard Street located in the 1st Council and District. And Resolution Number 210533 entitled a resolution commemorating June 19, 2021, as Korean-American Citizenship Day to celebrate the first naturalization of a Korean-American in 1890. A resolution number, all under certain terms and conditions.
Good?
Yes, Mr. President. That completes the resolutions.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second? Thank you. It is moved and probably second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 It was opposed. Ayes had it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, will you now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda?
Bill Number 200713 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Frankfurt Avenue, Master Street, and 6th Street. Bill Number 210362 entitled an ordinance demanding Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by many certain provisions of Section 14502 entitled CTR Center City Overlay District. Bill Number 210425 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlaid zoning districts by revising certain provisions of Section 14514 entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District. And Bill Number 210328 entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for the first year 2021 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund and the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And Bill Number 200627 entitled an ordinance authorizing ARD 1105 Walnut LLC or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain various approachments at 1101 through 07 Walnut Street. And Bill Number 210333 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Greenwood Street and 2nd Street, Reed Street and South Ford Street, Moynihan Avenue, and Wharton Street. And Bill Number 210334 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Moore Street and South 2nd Street. And Bill Number 210390 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Dolphin Street and Belgrade Street, Almond Street and Dolphin Street, York Street and Almond Street, Tagler Street and Norris Street, Cedar Street and Norris Street, Marlborough Street and Thompson Street. And Bill Number 210391 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Ellsworth Street and South 9th Street, Reed Street and South Broad Street, Mountain Street and South 6th Street, Latona Street and South 7th Street. And Bill Number 210392 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Moore Street and South 6th Street, McLean Street and South 5th Street, Mifflin Street to South 6th Street, South 3rd Street to McKeen Street. And Bill Number 210393 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Ray Street from North 5th Street to North 4th Street and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits. And Bill Number 210394 entitled an ordinance authorizing approachments in the nature of the Sidewalk Cafe in the vicinity of 941 South 8th Street. And Bill Number 210412 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of the 6400 block of Somerville Avenue. And Bill Number 210413 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Lobus Avenue between East Uppsle Street and East Hoarder Street. And Bill Number 210414 entitled an ordinance establishing a no parking regulation on North 3rd Street, both sides between West Erie Avenue and West Sedgley Avenue. And Bill Number 210415 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on West 65th Avenue, both sides between North Front Street and North 2nd Street. And Bill Number 210416 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 12th Street and Champlin Street, 69th Avenue and North 12th Street, Camack Street and Champlin Street Avenue, Park Avenue and Nidro Avenue, North 13th Street and Alney Avenue. And Bill Number 210422 entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Paul Street, Meadow Street, Takawana Street, Worth Street, Pear Street, Gillingham Street, Josephine Street, Blair Street, and east Montgomery Avenue and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits. And Bill Number 210447 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Chester Avenue from 66th Street to 67th Street. And Bill Number 210448 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations on both sides of Webster Street between 20th Street and 21st Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye of those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Scola?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative for each of the bills. The bills on the consent agenda are passed. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210215.
A resolution submitting to the electors of the city an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled referenda approved by the voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to pass legislation that will decriminalize, regulate, and tax the use and sale to adults aged 21 years or older of cannabis for non-medical purposes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution and the companion bill, Number 210206, provides an opportunity for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia to weigh in on this issue. Some years ago, the General Assembly moved forward with medical cannabis legislation that provided medical cannabis to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and more specifically here for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. From my perspective, I think it provides an opportunity, and citizens of our city need an opportunity to weigh in on this issue. I want to thank all the speakers that talked about this issue in the public comment session. As you heard from them, it was a wide range of speakers from those dealing with issues of post-traumatic stress disorder, for those who are really encouraging and want to see more autismers of color, especially in the African-American community, to be able to benefit from this type of industry. As well as my own experience of talking with a number of individuals, both in autism community and other communities who have disabilities, the benefit from this type of legislation. Considering that other states around Pennsylvania, like Virginia, New Jersey, and New York have already moved into the space of adult use legislation, I think it's impudent upon us as a city to give this opportunity to the voters of the city of Philadelphia to weigh in on this perspective. And then, as the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania starts to look at this legislation in more detail, we'll be able to add our voice to this conversation. I've spoken previously with State Senator Sharif Street as well as Representatives Jordan Harris and Representatives Teresa Parker, who due to their schedules were not able to call into the public comment session of our council session. And I believe this provides an opportunity for our citizens to voice their perspective on this legislation and on this industry, which is also providing resources and benefits to cities and states all around this nation. With that, Council President, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Point of information? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for pointing of information.
My good friend and colleague, Member Green. For the record, this does not... Aye vote on this does not mean a affirmative vote on marijuana. It just gives an opportunity for a forum for there to be further discussion about the issue, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Jones. I think when the medical cannabis legislation came through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, citizens in the city of Philadelphia really didn't have an opportunity to have this conversation. This legislation is able to be voted and passed by this body and then go on the ballot in November. It will really allow us as citizens and constituents and colleagues in this legislative body, and yes, for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia to have a more robust conversation and education about this area and also allow us to voice our opinion to the members of the General Assembly, especially those that represent the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Member Green, because the double and the information are in the details. Thank you so much, Member.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. It was motion.
It's second.
Yes. Chair recognizes... Who's that?
Mr. President, I just seconded. I just... I have seconded the motion, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It was moved and probably seconded. All in favor of motion indicate by saying aye.
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 It was opposed.
Could we get a roll call, Mr. President? Could we get a roll call?
What, a roll call?
It's a charter amendment, so it requires two-thirds votes. You need to prove for the record.
I'm sorry. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Two-thirds of all members of council have been voting affirmative. Resolution 210215 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210518.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt Senate Bill 670 and House Bill 696, which will provide $30 million in funding for community-based violence interventions.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Before I call for the adoption of the resolution, I just want to acknowledge the hard work of State Senator Artie Hayward and State Representative Donna Bulla, particularly around the issue of bringing resources back to the city of Philadelphia in the form of violence prevention grants. And so, we know this has to be an intergovernmental approach, and so I thank the two of them for stepping up to the plate and most importantly, fighting during their upcoming budget as they have a total of $10 billion surplus that they are going to have to address. $3 billion coming from the federal government with additional $7 and additional revenue surplus. And so, I want to support all my colleagues on the state level to fight vigorously to make sure they bring back additional resources to address the issue of gun violence in the city of Philadelphia. With that being said, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second?
Thank you. It is moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes had it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker? Please read the title of Bill Number 210206.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled referenda approved by the voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to pass legislation that will decriminalize, regulate, and tax the use and sale to adults aged 21 years or older of cannabis for non-medical purposes.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Ayes are 17, ayes are zero. Majority of all members have been voting affirmative. The bill passed. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210081.
An ordinance amending Chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled property licenses and owner accountability, Section 8906 entitled property license fees, Chapter 14604 entitled accessory usage of structures, and Chapter 192400 entitled hotel room rental tax to add and revise provisions related to the use of properties for limited lodging and hotel purposes and to the collection of hotel rental taxes in connection therewith.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass? Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Mr. President, I apologize. This is Councilwoman Bass. I'm an aye as well. I'd like to be recorded as aye.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Ayes are 17, ayes are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passed. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210332.
An ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter An ordinance amending Title nine of the Philadelphia Code by amending Section nine, two oh three, related to street vendors by prohibited, by prohibiting street vending on certain portions of East Past Young Avenue and surrounding areas.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Scola for an amendment to Bill Number two-one-zero, three-three-two.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number two-one-zero, three-three-two. A copied amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and Bill Number two-one-zero, three-three-two has been amended. Bill Number two-one-zero, three-three-two as amended will be placed on the final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number two-one-zero, four-twenty-three.
An ordinance amending Section twelve, eleven thirty-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled All-Terrain Vehicles to address off-road vehicle use in the city of Philadelphia.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members have been voting affirmative, bill passed. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-one-zero, three-sixty-four.
An ordinance amending various chapters of the Philadelphia Code to address matters related to the availability of feminine hygiene products in city facilities and making certain technical changes.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present voting affirmative, bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
Resolution Number two-one-zero, five-one-six, entitled a resolution calling upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly to end unconstitutional race and wealth disparities in school funding and to fully adequately and fairly funded schools in Philadelphia and across the Commonwealth by utilizing the state's fair funding formula as the basis of all K through twelve education funding and providing adequate recurring state funding introduced by Councilmember Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. First of all, I want to acknowledge the hard work of our state delegation, especially our Appropriations Chair, Senator Vincent Hughes, and all members of the Philadelphia delegation and leadership, including our leader Joanna McClinton, who's been working so hard on the issue of school funding, in particular, at an unprecedented time. As my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, said earlier, Pennsylvania state legislature has a ten-billion-dollar surplus. And there's no question that at this time, after decades of lawsuits about the unconstitutionality of funding in Pennsylvania around schools, that the most urgent issue we can call upon the General Assembly, or one of the most urgent issues we can call upon the General Assembly to do, is to truly end the unconstitutional race disparities in school funding. Racial inequity and funding inadequacy define Pennsylvania's school funding system. It what, it's what defines it even more than any kind of test score, any kind of building. It's all rooted back to a inequitable and racist funding formula. We are home to six of America's fifty most starkly segregated school districts, which separate the wealthiest predominantly white districts from under-resourced schools that serve our mostly non-white citizenry, our children, and youth. We rank forty-fifth in the nation in terms of state contributed funding to schools. And according to Power Interfaith, Pennsylvania schools with the fewest white students receive on average less than two thousand dollars per pupil in state funding. That's hundreds of millions of dollars in difference when you look at a school district the size of Philadelphia. In September, the lawsuit that was filed by advocates and by a number of school districts here will move forward before the Commonwealth Court. And the state of Pennsylvania has an opportunity to show that, that they can, they can make change. Because honestly, the trial is not, the legal trial may be in September, but this legislature has been on trial whenever our school doors open. Every time the kids, we, they go to schools without libraries. They have, we struggle to get enough counselors in schools. We do not have, you know, we've got overcrowding. We can't afford to pay teachers at a competitive rate. This is, this system has to end. We have the resources to do it. Approximately eleven percent of the state education budget now runs through the Fair Funding Formula, which was enacted in 2016. But it has not fundamentally changed the way school funding works in this Commonwealth because it's simply too much money and we're too far behind. With the ten billion dollars, the state legislature has a chance to finally bring a sense of justice and responsibility to the school funding issue before they go on formal trial before a judge. We will look forward to showing what this looks like in a, in a Commonwealth Court. But at this point, I urge my colleagues to send a message now for our General Assembly to take a proactive step and the unconstitutional race and wealth disparities in school funding and to run this, run additional money through the K, through the Fair Funding Formula as the basis of all K to twelve education funding and allocate that ten billion dollars to finally fix our schools. Thank you very much. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. The mood and property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Have it. Resolution is adopted.
Resolution Number two-one-zero, five-two-three, entitled a resolution calling upon the Congress of the United States to enact the Law Enforcement Education and Accountability for People with Disabilities Initiative, bipartisan policing reform bills to address the high incidence rate of violence involving people with disabilities offered by Senator Bob Casey, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Senator Casey for this legislation that he's introduced regarding this critical issue. His motivation for this legislation is based on the tragic killing that we all are very cognizant of, of Walter Wallace Jr. in West Philadelphia. And those who have physical learning differences have a higher level of countering this type of violence. And I think it's incumbent upon us now as a legislative body to, but to use our advocacy to push forward and support this legislation in the Congress. Senator Casey has been a strong advocate for those who have learning and physical differences for a number of years, from his work not only regarding autism, but for all people that have disabilities. I want to thank him for introducing this legislation, especially in this month, June, which is Disability Pride Month. And this is a reminder that we still have much more work to do, that we do not have additional tragic situations like the Walter Wallace killing in the city of Philadelphia and around this nation. And with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor of the resolution being adopted, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and that resolution is adopted.
Resolution Number two-one-zero, five-two-five, entitled a resolution calling upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to enact Senate Bill five-ninety-eight to allow political subdivisions to restrict the presence and use of firearms at their properties and facilities introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. This issue, Senate Bill five-nine-eight, is an important issue because we need to make sure that in municipal buildings, we're doing all that we can to stop the continued gun bans that we've seen not only in our cities but around the nation. The Pennsylvania Municipal League, where our service president has been supporting this legislation, and it's critical that we do this type of legislation in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, members of General Assembly have been going the opposite direction in recent legislation in reference to concealed carry permits as well as trying to restrict the ability of cities like Philadelphia to enact its own gun control laws. But we need to make sure that our citizens are safe when they're in public buildings like City Hall or Municipal Services Building, and we should not be having guns come into those buildings as we, as members of City Council, as other people who are doing public business are in those buildings. We don't need to have guns in those locations. And I think it continues the advocacy that we've seen at the Pennsylvania Municipal League to allow cities to enact laws that allow them to govern themselves. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding making permanent in the Philadelphia Code to permit outdoor dining spaces on city streets and sidewalks and the outdoor entertainment sidewalk cafe rules established pursuant during the COVID-nineteen pandemic introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
The sponsor of the bill?
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for point of information.
Thank you, Council President. For the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Dom, could you just give a real quick brief just clarification on your bill?
It's really to have hearings, not a bill, to have hearings on where we go from here regarding the outdoor dining. As the outdoor dining legislation expires the end of this year, we want to be able to come back at least in September and be able to tell our restaurant people what the future looks like. So it's really to listen to and hear from people in the industry as to what should we be doing in the city going forward and what's the best, what's best for the Philadelphia down the road.
Thank you very much.
Point of information.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yes, I want to thank the author of this resolution because from Main Street to Market Street, there is no consistent diagram outline for these outdoor dining. In some cases, you have entire streets blocked off. You go Sampson Street, I believe around Fifteenth to Sixteenth, you can't get a vehicle through. In other areas, we've experienced traffic accidents involving some of those outdoor dining facilities. The other day, I had an opportunity to be down at Barclay Prime on their outdoor dining, and it was well thought out. It had HVAC. It had three areas open on all sides, but no one is really clear about or predicting how to design and build these structures and whether or not they're in locations that can be per-permanent. And I wanted to give that benefit to Member Johnson.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker, did you wish to be recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I too, just as a point of information, wanted to note for the record that I thank Councilmember Dom for introducing this resolution. And Mr. President, I've said from the very beginning, even during our last budget process when we were moving in this direction, that I was excited about seeing outdoor dining get established in the city of Philadelphia and clearly wanted to make sure that the structures that you heard Councilmember Jones so explicitly just explain, Councilmember Dom took me on a tour and we walked to see all of those that were established. And, you know, I, Mr. President, in my normal traditional, what I usually see in the suburbs and getting a little frustrated why I don't see them over here in the city, I said to Councilmember Dom, this should be permanent. This should be standard operating procedure for restaurants in the city of Philadelphia because in some instances, they can almost double their capacity. But we do have to deal with rules, regs, and firm designs for structures. So Councilmember Dom, I look forward to working with you on this issue in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, Councilman Dom, just off your motion again.
I move. Now, Council President, this is Councilman Heenan. May I be recognized?
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Sorry. I know the Microsoft Team hand wave sometimes hard to see, but I wanted to chime in because we've been working with Councilmember Dom and Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson addressing, trying to address these issues. And as other members has, has noted, as, as you yourself, back in the spring, it's complicated. It is not a one-size-fits-all situation for regulations and for a department to rush a one-size-fits-all, I think is, it might be a little bit irresponsible. And I think, you know, the action and the timing of Councilmember Dom and Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, as taken along with myself, is responsible, it's appropriate, and we want to get it right and we want to make sure that it lasts for sustainability and in all different, at all different levels and in all neighborhoods with, with options. I had somebody say to me that, you know, when you have a limited space inside, you know, it's about, you know, butts and chairs, right? And, you know, for their longevity and their success, especially for smaller businesses where, you know, they risk it all, they're putting everything on the line, having a seat outside, increasing its capacity responsibly, it could be critical to their success moving forward, especially coming out, out of this pandemic. So I want to thank Councilmember Dom.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Dom, let's start over again.
Okay. I will thank my co-sponsors, Councilmember Heenan and Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it and the resolution is adopted.
We have an additional bill called up from the second reading and final passage calendar by Councilmember Heenan, Bill Number two-one-zero, two-zero-four, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Milner Street, Princeton Avenue, and the Delaware River.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two separate days, the question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Aye, zero seventeen, zero. Majority of the members present voting affirmative, the bill passes.
There are no other bills or resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And right now, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to recess.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to convene at 4:00 PM today.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second that council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to convene at 4:00 PM today. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, council will stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I apologize, sir. Point of information, it is usually during this time that we would have comments and speeches for the minority and majority, and I know we will have the opportunity when we reconvene, but, Mr. President, I have a few comments that I would like to make with a sense of urgency, sir, if you give me the ability to do so.
Well, seeing how, as you asked me in front of thousands and thousands of people, I could not say no.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will reserve my comments about legislation, and I have notes here. So for Gilmore Richardson, Green, the homeownership legislation, I will reserve those so we can do that in the end after we reconvene. Do want to state for the record that the Labor and Civil Service Committee meeting will be held immediately following this and ask the members to please click on that link so that we can have a quorum to get started and proceed with the testimony. And a special thank you to our colleague, Councilmember and Vice Chair Brian O'Neal, for picking up for me when I have to step out. However, I have to address for the benefit of the viewing audience here today, something that occurred earlier that I would normally not address. I would just have let it go, Mr. President. And for the record, several of you have noted that in a very unconventional way, Council President was trying to get adjusted with his schedule, well, his script several times during the hearing. I want you to know today that both he and I received an enormous amount of text messages that were constantly flowing nonstop. And this was as a result for the viewing public of what was, you know, witnessed during the invocation and immediately following the invocation. And I would have normally let this go, but, you know, apparently, you know, someone was not on mute. And Philadelphia, I know I have a very distinct voice and, you know, I'm working on my tone, intonation, and inflection, but I do need to say to you that Councilmember Sherrell Parker, Majority Leader for this City Council, did not have any technical difficulties during the invocation and/or afterwards. Not only did people text me and text you, Mr. President, saying, that is awful, it is disrespectful, what is occurring right now, they called my staff, text my staff, and while my district office staff was in the office on Watts Worth Avenue, two business owners, I mean, who would have ever thought that two business owners on the avenue or have the television on watching us, you know, while they're running their businesses? But they went and knocked on my district office door and said Sherrell needs to go on mute because that's awful. Let me say this, Mr. President, I'll take it when it's well deserved because I am a technical dinosaur, but that was not Sherrell Parker, and I don't know whether or not Councilmember Gimm has any comments that she wants to make about this, but because it has had such an impact on members of the community as it relates to them communicating with me about this issue, I needed to clarify this for the record. And to my colleagues, I want to apologize for being this detailed to you, but the number of text messages and inquiries that I received about this, it required that I cleared this record formally. Thank you so very much, Mr. President. And the other comments I have about legislation that was introduced and passed today by my colleagues, I will save that during the appropriate time for speeches in the majority when we reconvene. Thank you so very much, colleagues, for the leeway you just provided.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, folks, we've recessed and we'll be back shortly. Again, Labor and Civil Service Committee will be following shortly. Thank you all, and I'll see you guys in a few. And good afternoon to everyone. We will now reconvene today's stated meeting. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance, and members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good afternoon, I am present.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Councilwoman Gottié.
Present.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Councilman Heenan. Good afternoon, I am present.
Councilman Jones. Councilman O.
Good afternoon, I am present.
Councilman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez.
Good afternoon, present.
Councilman Scola.
Present.
Councilman Thomas.
Present.
Council President Clark.
President, okay, we have established a quorum. We will now come to order. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to recess.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to convene on Friday, June 11, 2021, at 3:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second, the council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to convene on Friday, June 11, 2021, at 3:00 PM. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries, council will stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, scheduled to convene on Friday, June 11, 2021, at 3:00 PM. Thank you all very much. I will be in touch with members shortly. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you. Before we get started, ask that anybody mute, thank you. Good evening. We're going to start it now. We will now reconvene the stated meeting of Thursday, June 10, 2021. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Want to ensure that your screen, your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker? Call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Green.
I'm present.
Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan.
I am present.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez. Councilman Scola.
I'm present.
Councilman Thomas.
Present. I'm here. Present.
Council President Clark.
President, thank you. We've clearly established a quorum. We will now come to order. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the receipt of an additional committee report and the first reading of bills at this time.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the receipt of an additional committee report and the first reading of bills at this time. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Council President, Brian O'Neal, I am present in voting. Thank you.
Let the Councilman O'Neil be also present.
Mr. President, this is Councilwoman Bass, I am present as well.
Thank you. Let the record reflect the Councilman Bass, he's awesome. Those in favor, those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion passed. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports out two bills and one resolution with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please give your report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole, to which is referred Bill Number 210320, entitled in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2022 through 2027 inclusive, and Bill Number 210321, entitled in ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2022 capital budget, and Resolution Number 210517, entitled a resolution reappointing Jeffrey B. Goldstone with the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. Respectful reports, it is considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 210320 and 210321.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210320, 210321. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolution Number 210517 will be placed on the final passage calendar at our next session of council.
Pardon me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, this is Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. I just wanted the record to reflect that I am present. My apologies, I was having trouble with the links.
It is no problem, Councilman. Thank you. The record shows you as right of your present. Now note that the bills just reported from Committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passes calendar for the next session of council. That completes our calendar for today. Proud to recognizing members, proud to recognizing members, so, proud to recognizing members regarding, spell out a note for the record this time that we will use the chat feature available in the Microsoft team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. That said, are there any species on the part of the minority? Are there any species on the part of the majority? Then being done, Chair now recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until June 17, 2021, at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 17, 2021, at 10:00 AM. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion carries. Thank you all very much. We'll be in touch shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.